Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, September the 23rd, 2024. Please be advised the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such persons, and their address unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant might make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. And on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting of Monday, September 23rd, 2023 is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and 3.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on an item which is on consent agenda? Either Sections 1, 2, or 3. Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
We cannot vote on those items. Items 2A and B were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
All second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
The next set of items are on liquor resolutions. Madam Clerk.
I'll call items 4A and B together. Application of Salt Mine City LLC doing business as Salt Mine Brewing Company for a Class CG liquor license located at 801R Street, Suite 100, and the related manager application of Clifford Roper.
Good afternoon, Mr. Roper. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm here for the manager's license and the Salt Mine City Brewing Company liquor license.
All right. Could you tell us a little bit about your, uh, your business?
Um, I have a, um, a sports bar in David City and a brewery, small brewery in David City. Uh, we brew on a one barrel batch, so we have about 13 one barrel fermenters, so we're constantly brewing and cleaning and it's, we're not, we're not like the big boys here in Lincoln, but someday we hope to be. Um, we, um, we have a full-service restaurant in David City, lunch and dinner, my Tuesday through Saturday. So, and, uh, your burgers, chicken, sandwiches, salads, so on and so forth. Um, we may be looking to expand into that with a, uh, the second location here. They have, uh, an opportunity to do so if we're able to do that, so.
Any questions?
No questions, but I just wanted to thank you for, uh, expansion of the business here into the Lincoln Market. I for one, I'm sure my other councillors are excited to give it a try.
I am.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilman Shob, you have a question?
Yes, um, Mr. Roper, normally we do name, address, things like that, where you are, your name, your address, where you live, and where your location will be. Would you do those things for me?
The where I live is, uh...
Clifford Roper.
Clifford Roper, uh, David City, Nebraska, 1462 North 8th Street, uh, 68632. The, uh, location here in town is 801R Street, Suite 100, uh, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508.
Thank you.
Okay.
And when do you plan to open?
Um, tentatively three weeks.
Okay.
When everything clears and hopefully we can at least get a Husker game in this year. So...
Well, best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And like Mr. Beckius said, yay.
Yay, yeah. All right. Thanks so much.
Sit back down or...
Yeah, yeah, we'll vote on these in a moment.
Okay.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk. Oh, is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either 4A and B? All right, Madam Clerk.
I'll call items 4C, 4D, and 4E together. Application of Yen Family LLC doing business as Hero 88. Application of Yard Investments LLC doing business with Gate 25. An application of Bar at the Yard LLC doing business as Longwells. For a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 308 feet by 74 feet, a canopy street from R to Q Street on October 4th, 2024, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Is there anyone here to represent this application?
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming up to talk about these, um, applications, I'd like to move approval of items 4A through 4E.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? All right, Madam, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Uh, next items are public hearing resolutions, and Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
I'll call item 5A and 5B together. Approving a health insurance agreement between the city and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska, and the related pharmacy insurance agreement between the city of Lincoln and Employers Health Purchasing Corporation.
All right. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon, Barb McIntyre, 555 South 10th Street. And so, yep, these are our agreements moving from Aetna for our Blue Cross and Blue Shield carry, or from Aetna to Blue Cross and Blue Shield for our healthcare carrier. And then Aetna's also our pharmacy carrier today, and we'll be moving to Employers Health for pharmacy. Um, this change helps us keep our rate increases minimized. Um, and I don't want to use the word saves the city money because our plan, um, it just helps us keep those claims costs and that plan cost down, but we will still have a rate increase associated with the change, so.
Are there any questions from councillors?
One.
Oh, yes, Councilman Beckius.
Thank you, Director. Can you discuss briefly, um, uh, benefit levels and if there are any changes for folks?
Yeah, so we were really excited because we are changing our plan administrators, but we are not changing our plan coverage or any of the components of the plan design today in our pharmacy or our healthcare. We were able to maintain all of that and still get some better rates from Blue Cross and Employers Health and what we have today with that now. So that was very exciting to be able to reduce some of the expenses related to that and make no plan design changes to pharmacy or healthcare coverage. Um, the biggest, well, the biggest impact is changing, but it, there's like 98% of the providers in the network today will be in the network tomorrow also with Blue Cross, so there's not a significant provider change, there's no plan design changes or pharmacy design changes.
Very good. Thank you, Director.
You are welcome.
All right. Question. Uh, and Councilman Duden.
Councilman Chair, thank, thank you, Washington. Uh, what's a dollar advantage or amount? How much are we actually saving, the city of Lincoln?
Five million dollars.
That's, okay, that's not a poke in the eye, okay.
That's not a poke in the eye. We don't like to make these changes because it's a lot of work, right? But it's really hard to not make changes when it saves our, our plan five million dollars, um, which we really were looking for some savings because right now our plans, um, our claims experiences, like with everything else, the costs go up, so being able to save five million dollars is hugely impactful for us, so.
And doesn't the city, don't you solicit input from all the unions, that sort of thing?
Not with plan administrators. Um, so the plan design or their cost shares, that's probably what you're referencing. Those things are in those union contracts, but who administers the plan is not.
All right, very good. All right, thank you, yes.
Good clarification, thank you.
We did meet with our union presidents and give them a heads up though because I know that our employees do come to them and talk to them, so we gave them a heads up before, um, it got on the city council agenda just so they wouldn't be surprised by it.
Very good.
So we did do that. Any other questions? All right, yeah, I'm pretty excited we can do it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, uh, items 5A and 5B, health insurance and pharmacy insurance? Anyone here to speak on this item either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you. All right. Uh, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 5C, Special Permit 24026, application of Unitarian Church of Lincoln to allow for early childhood care facility for up to 35 children with associated waivers on the property generally located at 6300A Street.
All right. Uh, is there someone here to speak on this item? Is the applicant here? The applicant can come forward to speak without signing in.
Hi, my name is Jean Helms. I live at 6121 South 52nd Street Court here in Lincoln at zip code 68516, and I'm here representing the Unitarian Church as the administrative director. Um, the nuts and bolts of what we're asking is to be, um, allowed to operate a daycare within our facility, and there was one requirement, municipal code requirement that we are asking for a waiver on, which is the height requirement on the fence. Uh, we are not planning any new construction to the building or indoors or outdoors unless building and safety asks us to make any improvements. And I would accept any questions that you have about the waiver or anything.
All right. Any questions?
I have a question for David Carey on the same.
Do you have a question for the applicant?
Yes.
Councilman Shob, and then we'll have Director Carey come forward.
Thank you. Ms. Helms, thanks for coming forward. Uh, we've talked in our community a lot about childcare needs and daycares. About how many, uh, parents, students, children do you think you'll be able to serve in?
Um, the, the potential renter is, um, looking at up to 35, and that would be over the course of time because their operation is much smaller right now. Um, they're operating out of their home right now, and so they are also going, gonna be going through the process of getting the licensing they need to operate in a different type of facility. Um, but up to 35 children, and one thing that did come up at planning, uh, was that the noise issues, uh, potential noise issues, and we really feel confident that our noise issues are going to be much less than they have been the last seven years with the fairly significant size of, um, a Montessori school that's been operating in our building, which had access to the north and, and east sides of the building, which this one will not. So it really, uh, will not impact the neighborhood in, in our opinion. It's not adjacent to any housing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, any other, let's ask a question of David Carey, and then, um, Ms. Helms, you may come back at some point if you'd like to do a rebuttal after we've heard from the public.
Uh, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street.
This, this might seem a little bit off the wall, but my question, uh, is probably associated more with a later item, but, uh, it, uh, would influence this one, but, uh, has your, uh, has the planning department received any information or any guidance on how far, um, a child daycare should be from cell towers, that sort of thing?
I'm not aware of getting any of that type of correspondence or question.
You guys have any regulations involving cell towers on how far, uh, child facility should be from them, that sort of thing?
We do not have any regulations about that.
It just came to me, so I haven't had enough time to really research and see what the city does with that, so. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments for, or questions for David Carey?
Can you talk about the fence, uh, waiver issue? Yeah, a lot of this has to do with the fact that there's already an existing playground on the, the west side of the building. Um, so going back to the comment, um, from the applicant that, that there was a comment from a letter that talked about potential noise for, on the eastern side where there's some, but, this parcel butts the residential. There, this operation will fit on the west side of the building, and then there is an existing playground that has an existing fence, and given that no other changes are being proposed physically to the structure of the site, that we felt it was, it was appropriate to approve that waiver, um, to not make them put in a different size fence. Thank you.
All right. Well, seeing no other comments, um, I'll ask, there any, is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on this item? So is there anyone here present who'd like to speak on this item either in favor or in opposition? Anyone present who'd like to testify on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 5D, approving the natural gas supply contract with Hartley Natural Gas.
All right. Um, is there an applicant here on this, or actually I think we have a motion to do something with this item?
I think we do that after, what?
Okay.
You want you to do that now, or you want to do it after public testimony and things?
Well, we can do it after public testimony. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, uh, there will be a motion coming forward to delay this, so we won't make an action this week.
Let me just go ahead and do it now?
Yeah, let's do that right now.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we put this, delay this item one week with continued public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
And thank you very much, Councilman Beckius, so, uh, Shob, Beckius, uh, motion to delay one week, public hearing continuing. Um, Madam Clerk, can we take a vote on that?
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Um, let's look at the next item.
I'll call items 5E and 5F together. 5E and F is approving the Constellation Studios' Expansion and Redevelopment Project Redevelopment Agreement between the city and Constellation Studios LLC relating to the redevelopment to the property generally located at 2055O Street and adjacent rights of way, and the related fiscal year 2425 CIP to authorize an appropriate $230,000 in funds for the Constellation Studios' Expansion Redevelopment Project.
Good afternoon. Uh, Peter Heine, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. Uh, again, coming to you today to talk about this redevelopment agreement with the city and Constellation Studio Expansion. Uh, we talked last week about that, and for the record, I just wanted to say that that was the only art prize I ever got, so just one, uh, at 12 years old, to help, uh, Andrew. Um, this project is, is really exciting. I did, um, uh, bring a site plan just to talk a little further about how the site is going to be used, um, for that, but I'll start again with, the entire project is 1.3 million dollars, uh, in terms of investment, private investment, uh, by the owner, and the TIF amount for this is $230,000, and it will be small TIF, so we will, uh, issue that note. There is no bond involved, uh, with the project. Um, it's gone through all the approvals with Urban Design Committee, uh, Planning Commission, and then, uh, through this body. And so, as a reminder, I will put up the site plan, and then I'll, I won't spend too much time on this if we, I won't spend too much time because we talked about this last week. Um, but wanted to point out to you again that, uh, the TIF area includes, uh, the alley, uh, O Street on either side, and then the, uh, park area just to the east of the, the project. And then I'm going to do a quick switcheroo here and zoom in on the site, just to show you where in fact, as I described it last week, this is infilling that missing tooth piece, so that, that red lot was purchased by the owner and will be the area for the improvement that's there. You can also see we're going to be adding three metered lots, and there's going to be improvement of, of this lot to the east as well, um, and, and just some access off of the alley. And then, lastly for my part, and we'll have, uh, Andrew Willis and then the, the owner come up and talk about the project a little bit, is the sources and uses of TIF. And you can see here we've established the, the increment value, um, and then how much the TIF is generated, and then the uses, uh, of the TIF. And so you can see we have our typical fees, the site acquisition, the site preparation, and utility improvements, uh, for the site, uh, moving forward. So, very straightforward use of the tax increment financing on this project, uh, and one that we're really excited about. Uh, we, we try not to preference large projects over small projects, and we really think that this project adds a vitality and an interest to the downtown, especially along O Street, and then also, I might add, the entrance to the Telegraph District. I think this project does a lot to enhance that corridor coming into, uh, a lot of investment that's happened to a really wonderful part of the downtown. So are there any questions that I can answer for you today? Seeing none, I'm sure Andrew and Ms. Koontz have some things to add.
All right. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Andrew Willis, 233, 233 South 13th Street, Lincoln on behalf of, uh, Constellation Studios. Um, I don't need to necessarily add a lot. Again, there's your visual for the, um, area, oops, yeah, so the, you know, the existing studio here, and then the part that will be expanded. Um, and again, yes, this is 21st and O, the my, which I enjoy better is that view of the, of the, the building, the existing building now. Um, but ultimately, this is, um, an expansion, really doubling the size of the, of the, uh, artist, artists' studios. It's about a 1.3 million dollar total project cost, and again, small TIF, so it's $230,000. I call this small but mighty TIF. Um, the, really, this is, you know, the Lincoln Downtown Master Plan, uh, calls for the continuation of strengthening downtown's position as the Center for Arts and Cultural Expression, um, continuing to ensure a diversity of art and cultural venues. That's what this does. This expands it in a really great area, and, uh, you know, it's a good investment for the community, a good, and, and really good for the downtown. Uh, but again, even with that TIF, it's an over a million dollar investment, and that's, uh, that's a tough return if you're looking at just financial, fi- financials for the art, uh, studio and what's being done, but again, it's a, it's going to, I think it's going to bring a lot more than that in benefits for, for what it can do. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from councillors to Mr. Willis?
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. All right. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to, uh, address counsel on this item, speaking in either favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call item 5G, establishing the property tax levy to fund the adopted budget for the city's 2024-25 fiscal year.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, greetings to Chair Washington and members of the city council. Sherri Wolf, City Budget Officer, 555 South 10th Street. Um, your agenda item here today includes, uh, this resolution for adoption of the final property tax levy to fund the council adopted budget for the city's 2425 fiscal year. This is a ministerial action called out in the Lincoln City Charter, which provides that the city council is to set a tax rate that matches the adopted budget. As we communicated to you last week, the original resolution that was linked for first reading on the September 16th agenda had an error in the text that listed the year-over-year budget change at 71%. That calculation incorrectly reflected all funds, including capital projects like Water 2.0, which has 200 million of state funding in it, um, the wastewater treatment plan expansion at $56 million, and other projects. Utility projects of that size don't happen very often, and they skew the percentages significantly if they're included. Um, the calculation should actually be based on the tax-funded operating budget and CIP, which we have shown in previous year's resolutions. So the substitute resolution corrects that error and accurately, accurately shows the increase in the tax-funded budget at 8.2%. So I sincerely apologize for that error and ask the council to please approve the corrected substitute resolution. For the benefit of folks in the chamber and the viewing audience, on August 5th, 2024, the council held a public hearing for the purpose of receiving input on the proposed 2426 biennial budget. Council subsequently offered and passed several amendments before voting to adopt the final budget on August 26th. The council adopted budget maintains the tax rate at 29.533 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The 2425 budget went into effect at the start of the city's fiscal year on September 1st. Now today, pursuant to the charter of the City of Lincoln and Nebraska Revised Statute, Section 77-1632, the council is to set the tax rate at 29.533 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value to match the adopted 2425 budget. And with that, on behalf of the Finance Department Budget Team, I would like to thank all of you for all of your work on the 2426 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilman Duden?
Does this, uh, budget and this levy take into account what, uh, Human Resources just presented about a five million dollar savings?
It does.
Okay. Good.
Oh, let me just say, we didn't budget for the five million dollar increase, so all the pieces will come together.
Well, it's a decrease, yeah. Yeah, she's talking about a decrease, savings, so, okay.
Uh, Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Chair Washington, Sherri, I just, uh, or Ms. Wolf, I want to just clarify, so this is a ministerial action, uh, as it relates to the budget that we passed, uh, on August 26th, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf.
I know, I need to make a motion though to amend.
Um, yes, and we'll do that in just a moment. I'm going to see if there's any comments from the public, and then we'll come right back.
All right.
Yeah. Uh, is there anyone here? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition to the tax levy?
No, I didn't forget.
Please.
Hello, my name's Anastasia Fenner. I want to wave my address, of course. I guess I'm not super sure, like, either way, which way I stand, but I do know that the budget didn't do anything to stop any public funds going into the murder of Palestinians. No, there was no amendment that was made to, you know, alleviate any of the pain and suffering caused by the bombing that is coming from Lincoln, Nebraska. There was nothing that was in there to stop any city money from going towards getting people to work at General Dynamics, which is the company that makes bombs in Lincoln, Nebraska, that kills kids in Palestine, and has been doing so for more than a year, because I'm sure that their bombs had been used, like, before this recent ramping up of the genocide last October had happened. So of course, I'm perhaps saying, maybe don't do it, maybe figure out a way to amend that part of the budget to figure out how we can possibly, I don't know, stop killing children with our city dollars, because that is definitely what is going on, and it's incredibly disgusting that it continues to go on and that there was no discussion of it at all during the budget meetings. It's incredibly disappointing, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, that there was nothing that was said by the City Council people, there was no correspondence on this particular topic of understanding that public dollars do help the Lincoln Manufacturing Council, you know, promote General Dynamics and give them advantage over the people in, like, certain works programs that Lincoln has that tries to usher people into these manufacturing jobs. What they're manufacturing is bombs that kill children, and they are made here in Lincoln, Nebraska, at General Dynamics on Superior and Industrial Avenue, right across the street from a Walmart where citizens go in your city to try to, you know, purchase meager goods to live their lives, and they're doing so right next to a bomb manufacturer, that nobody did anything to try to cut out of the budget. No one said anything about cutting it out of the budget. So, I don't know, is there a way that we can perhaps find an amendment to, you know, fix that part of the budget, especially, I mean, like, hey, if we're going to save $5 million with whatever the hell it is that y'all are planning to do now, perhaps we could save even more money by not giving any public funds into trying to funnel people into General Dynamics. I mean, how much money would we possibly save by, like, not spending it on the war machine? I think it's, I don't know, isn't that pretty sensible to not completely spend any money on war? Why don't we save that money, spend it here in Lincoln, talking about beautifying downtown? Maybe we give those, you know, unhoused folks somewhere to live. But no one's dead, we're just going to make sure that the budget did not cut out any money going toward General Dynamics, which yet again is a manufacturer here in Lincoln, Nebraska, and they make bombs that kill children. And it's incredibly disturbing that nobody said anything about it during the budget meeting. Well, I mean, I said something about it, but there was certainly no discussion on how to make the City of Lincoln's budget less violent, because the idea that administrative things don't cause violence is, you know, ludicrous, because we can see it, because there's, you know, videos on the internet of the ramifications of what happens when these bombs are made in Lincoln and then they're dropped, you know, on civilians, women, children, the elderly, in Gaza. Yeah, so, I don't know, it seems like perhaps maybe you're not quite understanding that, you know, the budget can be used to decrease harm. I mean, isn't harm reduction something that people claim to care about? Perhaps we could, you know, reduce the harm that's within the city budget, because the budget allows there to be bombs made in Lincoln, Nebraska, at General Dynamics that kills people and has been killing people for over a year. And it is our fault, we are culpable in it. You had the opportunity, there was a public discussion, and nobody up here said anything on it. Instead, you just let everything go as business, and I guess you think that it's all right to run a city on a 30-minute meeting sometimes, you know, got to get out of here fast, you know, got to let those kids die while you do absolutely nothing. So, yeah, perhaps try to cut that out of the budget.
Thank you.
I've got, like, seven seconds.
Oh, please take your time. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk, let's proceed to the voting session.
I'll call item 5A, approving a health insurance agreement between the City and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Is there a motion to amend?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Okay. I can call the vote on 5A.
Okay.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is approving a pharmacy insurance agreement between the City of Lincoln and Employers Health Purchasing Corporation, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to introduce a motion to amend on 24R-414. The original resolution had the pharmacy agreement for a one-year term. The resolution that's being introduced changes that to a three-year term with an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. So it's just modifying that one aspect, the term, contingent agreement for the contract.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Carlson? Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, let's call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
And now the main motion.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Special permit, item 5C.
Item 5C, special permit 24026, application of Unitarian Church of Lincoln to allow for an early childhood care facility for up to 35 children with associated waivers on the property generally located at 6300 A Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? I'd like to take a minute to thank the Unitarian Church of Lincoln for leading in on this issue of childcare providing. It's really critically important that we have as much childcare, especially affordable childcare, as we can get, and to be willing to help a small company move from a home based into a center that can serve more children. Not only helps the children who attend, but it helps the families and helps workforce engagement, so thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Beckis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
And the next item has already been delayed, so let's move on to 5E.
Item 5E is approving the Constellation Studios' expansion redevelopment project, redevelopment agreement between the City and the Constellation Studios LLC relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at 2055 O Street and the adjacent Rides of Way, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
I will second.
Carlson, second. Any discussion? Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Chair Washington, and I just want to thank Ms. Kuntz for bringing this forward. I think that this is a really fantastic and exciting investment in the Telegraph District and in the local art industry, and I feel really fortunate to have business leaders like her in Lincoln, so I plan to support this measure.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5F is amending the fiscal year 2425 CIP to authorize an appropriate $230,000 in TIF funds for the Constellation Studios' expansion redevelopment project, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
And the next item has already been delayed, so let's move on to 5E.
Item 5E is approving the Constellation Studios' expansion redevelopment project, redevelopment agreement between the City and the Constellation Studios LLC relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at 2055 O Street and the adjacent Rides of Way, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
I will second.
Carlson, second. Any discussion? Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Chair Washington, and I just want to thank Ms. Kuntz for bringing this forward. I think that this is a really fantastic and exciting investment in the Telegraph District and in the local art industry, and I feel really fortunate to have business leaders like her in Lincoln, so I plan to support this measure.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
And now the main motion.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move forward with public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 6A. Item 6A is annexation 24008, application of Medallion Custom Homes to annex 4.6 acres of property generally located at South 56th Street and Cavy Road.
Is there anyone here to speak on the annexation? Is there anyone here to speak on the annexation? Item 6A. Oh, Mr. Carey, thank you.
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. On behalf of the applicant, I can provide some overview of this. This was an item that was at the September 23rd, sorry, excuse me, the September 4th Planning Commission hearing on the consent agenda and did not have public hearing. It was approved at that meeting. This is an area, it's a single lot, that is looking to use city services, and in order per our policy to use city services, it is to be annexed into the city. So there's interest in constructing a new home on this site with those services, so just to identify the location, it is at 5500 Cavy Road. This annexation, the urban services are available adjacent to the lot, and therefore, that is not an issue. It meets all of our requirements for annexation into the city, and this would bring in the right-of-way of Cavy Road that goes out to South 56th Street, so with that, I can answer any questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
On this annexation, I understand the reasoning behind the request for city utilities. When it takes in the right-of-way of Cavy Road, does that change significantly LTU's responsibilities at that intersection?
I wouldn't say at the intersection, because South 56th Street, the right-of-way of South 56th Street is already in the city because of the annexations around this area. Specifically, it would bring in that stretch of Cavy Road to be city responsibility, and so this happens in different locations throughout the community, and we basically have an ongoing conversation and agreement with the county engineer to make sure who's providing service on which roads, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
So that's kind of how this will be handled in the future as well.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Duden.
I know, I see you have a drawing there, and I think the public would like to see this area, that sort of thing, if you could kind of explain that again.
This is the property outlined here. This is South 56th Street. Cavy Road runs through here, through the development, and this is the property that is requesting annexation. I'll bring this drawing up a little bit further and just identify that this is the full area that is not in the city yet. It's the entire area of the country acres development, an acres development that is now becoming enveloped by the city. So this is one piece of that overall acres development.
And that area is basically surrounded by annexed city or city property or city?
Pretty much now, yes.
That's all I had.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? All right. Thank you, Director Carey.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Anyone here in the chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 6B, approving an agreement for tower space and appurtenances between the City and Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless to occupy and use certain city-owned parcel of real property and tower generally located at 7401 South 56th Street.
Good afternoon, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street. I'll put a map up here just to give you some, whoops. So, we are in the area of South 56th Street here, Pine Lake Road here on the north. There is a city site here. There's an LES substation in this area, city water tower facility here, an existing cell tower here. There are currently two providers on that cell tower. This is a lease to put a third provider on that, in that location. The provider would be Verizon. The terms of this lease are somewhat consistent with other leases that the city has entered into with these sites throughout the city. There's one unique aspect of this agreement, and that is the fact that the existing tower will not support a third provider, so Verizon will actually be constructing a new tower at this location. The other antenna will be moved over to this location, so there will be a new tower built. The old tower will eventually be taken down after those existing providers have been moved over to the current tower. The rent is consistent with what we are doing with other leases across the city. The term would be for a 10-year initial term and three five-year options. Again, that's something that we try to stay consistent with across these leases. Again, it's in existing locations, we're not putting up a new tower that's new to a neighborhood or something like that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Beckis.
Thank you, Council Chair Washington. Thank you, Mr. C. Quick question. The improvement that's being put on here, the new tower, if you will, ownership of that tower?
Ownership of that tower will continue to be with the City of Lincoln. So the way it works is that Verizon will actually construct the tower at their cost. They will receive a credit on their rent for a period of not to exceed eight years. That's how they pay back the cost of rebuilding the new tower.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Any other questions on this?
You clarified my questions I was going to have, so very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Hi, Emily Maluski, 114 South 54th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Maluski? All right. There are no questions, but thank you very much for making the drive. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, then we'll move forward. All right.
I'll call items 6C, D, E, and F together. Item 6C through 6F is approving the Center Terrence redevelopment agreement between the City and CT Redevelopment LP relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at D Street on South 13th Street, excuse me, on D Street on the south, South 13th Street on the west, and E Street on the north, and the related fiscal year 2425 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2,476,000 in tax increment financing for the Center Terrence redevelopment project, and the related resolution authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed $24 million to finance a portion of the construction and acquisition of a multifamily a portion of the construction and acquisition of a multifamily housing facility generally located at one thousand South Thirteenth Street, and the authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Center Terrence redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
All right, is there someone to speak on this item? Welcome back, Director Hind.
Good afternoon, Peter Hind, Director of Urban Development, five five five, South Tenth Street. I have been here for about a year, just slightly over a year, and this is a project I have been very excited to get to this day. As you know, the city has an affordable housing coordinated action plan, and this project speaks to that and works to help solve some of these issues. Um, whether it's affordable housing or workforce housing, I don't think those things can go into the same sentence. This project is sixty percent area meeting income, a hundred percent of it is affordable. That's really excited, exciting. Uh, as you know, we're working in the south of downtown to improve the quality of housing. That's one of our efforts that we do with, with TIF grant funds, and this project happens, this is, uh, one of those concepts that I talk about of collateral benefit. This is one of those projects where things are happening, developer comes and sees an opportunity to really make a difference in, uh, an area and in a neighborhood. Going back to the beginning of the project, um, the, the owner, the developer worked hard to meet with the neighborhood, uh, to, to get consensus, it started a little larger, um, it has, has fluctuated, and I think we've, we've gotten to a point, and I'll show you the, the building in just a, a minute, where we feel comfortable with the amount of parking, the amount of units, and the, the mix of units that are there, uh, within it. I want to also point out, uh, and just thank our staff, Ernie Castillo, and also Law, Tim C., and their hard work for this project. Um, it, it really has taken a lot of creative thinking, uh, over the last, uh, year or more to get this project to where it is now. So, getting into some of the, the nitty-gritty, as you know, it's about a thirty-nine million dollar project, the TIF amount is two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And, uh, I'm gonna let, um, you know, uh, Mike Rogers, our Bond Counsel, come up and talk specifically about the bond, so I'm gonna defer questions to him on those things because, uh, he's a genius when it comes to that.
He's in the room.
He, he is in the room, I just had to make sure that he was, my heart stopped for just a, just a moment. Um, I knew he was here, he's got my back. But th- this project is really wonderful because it has a mix of one and two and three bedrooms, so it's really, it's, um, catering to, uh, clients that will have families, individuals, and so it would be a really, uh, a rich, uh, mix of offering to the community. I'm gonna show our, our typical, uh, map that we always show, uh, just showing how we're thinking about it as well, we're, you know, zero people live on this site, and now we're gonna put two hundred, two hundred and fifty people that are living here, so we're really thinking about, uh, the surroundings, uh, of the site and the public, uh, right-of-way that's there. I'll talk a little bit about more i- in a minute, and you can see, uh, the red project, uh, location here. Then I'll just break down the, um, TIF. So I'll, I'll jump into the TIF allocation or TIF costs and, and the uses. You can see we have our, our typical city fee, Bond Counsel fee. Uh, site acquisition, this site, uh, had a single-story building, Center Point on-site. That building was raised to make way for this, uh, project. The, uh, owner also, um, what's the word? Oh, oh, thank you. Ben, you're here, how nice. There we go. It's in color. Um, we had to vacate the alley for a portion of the site, I'll talk about that in just a minute, and, um, so there is significant site work that had to happen, uh, for this project. In the facade, and I'll, now that Ben's here and my heart isn't racing at about three hundred beats per minute, he can talk about the project, but what's, what's really wonderful about this, this project is the facade is comprised of thoughtful materials that are gonna be long-lasting, uh, as well as windows and other things, and then you can see as well the energy enhancements. Most of those are, um, with some of the mechanical systems that the, uh, developer is using, and then, uh, some funds for the public way of landscaping, uh, hardscape and sidewalks. So I'm not gonna jump into the building, that I, I now know that, uh, Ben is here. Let me just make sure I'm not forgetting other, another, uh, really great portion of this project is, on the main floor, there's clinic with a heart. The developer, uh, embraced this use and this tenant to provide healthcare services to the community, um, and so we thought about that with parking on the street and other, uh, amenities that will make that a successful project. And, and lastly, as we look at this project in the city and the urban connections, we think about connections to local restaurants, the F Street Center, police stations, and faith-based organizations, and there is thr- three schools within walking distance of this site. So it's exciting to see this density happening in a smart way and, and a long-lasting way. So I'll turn it over to Mike to talk about the bond effort that we're gonna have on this project.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell, Bond Counsel for the city. So this, um, obviously there's a, there is tax increment financing associated with this project, uh, and that's, uh, normal, I guess, for, it's a, it's not an unusual tax increment financing. This also has with it, uh, multi fam- multifamily housing revenue bonds, which is not, uh, something the city does frequently, but has done several times over the past couple of years. Um, so it's not, we're not plowing new ground with, with that, uh, but, um, this hearing also for, uh, for item six E is required under the federal tax code, there was notice published in the Lincoln Journal Star on September thirteenth and sixteenth for this hearing, so just wanna make sure that's, uh, noted for the record that there was extra notice published. And, uh, the city's role in this financing is to help facilitate, um, the borrower, uh, borrowing at tax-exempt rates. Um, for any tax-exempt financing in the United States, there has to be a governmental entity involved, so even for a nonprofit, this isn't, isn't a nonprofit project, but for an, any nonprofit enterprise to borrow at tax-exempt rates, they need to have a governmental entity involved, and, um, so conduit financings is, is the term used in both, uh, accounting standards as well as public finance industry, but the city helps the, uh, the borrower achieve tax-exempt borrowing rates, um, and ultimately the pecuniary liability, the responsible for pay, the responsibility for paying that back, uh, lies with the borrower, not with the city, the city is here to help arrange it, set up the structure, and then, uh, let the borrower and the lender, uh, work with each other to, to have the loan paid back. Uh, that's, that's happening here. Um, obviously, this, this is not a, a nonprofit project, uh, Hoppy Development is, is, uh, this is a for-profit effort, but it involves low-income housing tax credits as well as tax-exempt, uh, bonds under the federal tax code, that's viewed as a worthy, uh, benefit, this is all federal tax law stuff, but, um, going through the process here at the city is one, uh, one facet of the overall larger financing structure, uh, and so the city's role here is, as conduit issuer, uh, for bonds issued to benefit this borrower, uh, in the principal amount, uh, of not to exceed twenty-four million dollars. That's in addition to the tax increment financing, which is done under the community development law like, um, most other tax increment financings are done, are done in the City of Lincoln. And, um, I think that is all I wanted to cover. Obviously, Hoppy Development is involved, uh, Horizon Bank, uh, is the lead on the construction loan, and Cedar Rapids Bank is also involved, uh, in addition to Union Bank and Trust as the bond trustee, uh, for the, uh, affordable housing, uh, portion of the financing.
Are there any questions from councilors right now? Oh, yeah, Councilman Beckis.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mike, I just wanted to clarify in really simple terms, because I will get asked questions about this, uh, every time we, we are the conduit entity. Um, the City of Lincoln is responsible for the repayment of the twenty-four million dollars. Not at all.
Not at all.
Correct.
Only, only from the money that the borrower pays in to pay back the loan, so no responsibility. If the borrower defaults and doesn't repay it, the lenders can only look to the borrower and whatever collateral has been pledged or mortgaged for payment of it. And that, there's a long history of cities and county, counties serving as conduit issuers for decades, and there have been defaults on these kinds of borrowings, and the lenders all know the risks, and they all know that the borrower, the non-governmental entity, is responsible for repayment.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it, I think you saved me at least two, two answers from folks asking questions after this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Good question. Any other questions or comments for either Mike or for Peter?
The only comment I would say is, is a great location for this particular project, uh, right in the center of, uh, the near-south, uh, neighborhood, and, and it's gonna serve a lot of people, and like you said, close to Mcfee School and, and Park and, and Everett, so, uh, it's a good location for families and what have you as well, so it'll help, uh, kind of clean up that entire area just a little bit, so.
Yep, be a good asset for the neighborhood, for sure.
Appreciate it, appreciate your work on this.
Thank you very much.
I think we have some other folks coming up, uh, from the development side that are gonna talk about the project, and.
Fred's here too, so.
We'll stick around for, if there's any other questions.
I'll start, and then I'll let.
Yeah. Alrighty, Mr. Hoppy. Good afternoon, the microphone is to your right or left, all right.
I'm Fred Hoppy, I live at sixteen hundred Stony Hill Road, Lincoln, Nebraska, and I'm a principal of Hoppy Development. We're doing this project, we'll pay those bonds. Project's a big project. Hundred and twenty-five units of affordable housing over a first-floor commercial space that's gonna be clinic with a heart, a free clinic for downtown Lincoln in south of downtown. We thought, we've been working on this project a long time. We got involved way early, uh, when Soto, south of downtown, agreed to buy from Center Point, the old Center Point building, which is this site. And not long after that, we were consulted for affordable housing, or unaffordable housing, which we're pretty involved with, um, to redevelop that site and put something together. In the process, we started watching what was happening with ARPA funds and the, the funds to bring us out of the pandemic, and we saw that there were two kinds of funds that we could apply for, to put together a project, um, like the redevelop, like what we have now, and we did. We got four million dollars in ARPA funds from D E D, we got two million dollars in ARPA funds for, um, the clinic with a heart, so that they could put in, uh, the, a clinic in that building. Then that all progressed, but as I've been down here and told you before, the cost of putting together a project and the cost of construction doesn't equal the amortization of tenant rents in low-income projects. Particularly in this project, because we have stacked together financing so that we could buy down the rents that we're charging. Uh, in our rent structure, we got thirteen units that are targeted at thirty percent median income. We've got twenty-three and eight, what's that, thirty-one, that are targeted at fifty percent median income, and we used a combination of financing vehicles, one, national trust funds to buy down those thirty percent units, we have, uh, loans through, um, targeted loans, uh, purpose loans through the Lincoln Community Foundation that helped buy down the rest of those. So, the, the interesting thing, we'll take responsibility for paying your bonds, and there's no question about it, but the financing of this project is a bunch of different stacked methods of bringing equity in and loans that allow us to have extremely modest rents in the building and have a targeted low-income occupancy that is gonna be very significant, we think, to the, the occupancies in south of downtown. Anyway, I'll have Ben, who can, uh, one of my staff, Ben Coons, uh, who will give you more of the details on what we're doing, and, uh, and then we'll let Andrew finish up 'cause he does our legal work. Ben, yours.
Good afternoon. Ben Coons, Hoppy Development, five six three one, South Forty-Eighth Street. I won't belabor this too much, as you've seen this before, uh, I'll focus on a few updates. I don't know if it's popping up. So as mentioned, it's hundred and twenty-five units, affordable housing, a new home for clinic with a heart. Really, the design has not changed a whole lot, uh, it's really stayed in place since, um, you've seen it last, to my knowledge. What has changed is we've, uh, for example, gotten a clear partnership in place with, uh, the Luck Center to do a public art process, um, and engage the public in that. We've completed the design for clinic with a heart, and so it's really exciting to see that come together. The, um, the construction documents are completed, and so we're getting real traction in regards to understanding what the costs are, uh, and the reality's getting this thing in the air. But just as a quick refresher, it's a fairly large building, but we've tried to break it down into three smaller masses, uh, we tried to use, uh, materials we found in the neighborhood that are both resilient and, uh, referential to the neighborhood. And we are excited to deliver this project with an elevator, um, it's a bit of a unique feature for this neighborhood, um, and so we think that's an important thing. One of the important pieces of this project is what we're calling the front porch concept, it's got, uh, second-floor roof deck, uh, a linear park, uh, meant for all, as well as a pocket plaza and community room and a mobile infrastructure stall, whether that's a food truck or a, um, mobile healthcare vendor. And so all these things kind of coming together, we really hope this is a platform for neighbors and not just residents. And Fred mentioned a lot of the partnerships we have, uh, here today also is, uh, South of Downtown and Neighborhoods Lincoln, both hugely important in putting this together. Glad that they conceived this and brought us in, uh, they also helped us with neighborhood engagement, um, and so that process was, um, really great to have them as part of it, and in many ways, I, I think we think of this as their project, uh, not just a Hoppy Development project. And so, happy they're here today to support. And then also, we have Nancy with Clinic with a Heart, uh, and she'll speak quickly on the project as well. Not wanting to labor this any further, I'll just open it up to questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Coons? Thank you so much for explaining the project, I love seeing how it's coming forward.
Good afternoon, Andrew Willis, two thirty-three, South Thirteenth Street, on behalf of Hoppy Development. I don't like following these guys, they've already said all the, the good stuff, so I don't need to say a lot more, but, but I do wanna, uh, you know, I wanna first reiterate, you know, with a thirty-nine million dollar affordable housing project, it really does, uh, it's been a really, um, a lot of work to get to this point. The, you, the city, if, you know, being willing to be the conduit for those bonds is a huge deal. Um, all the partnerships that have, have brought money to this, you know, ARPA funds, but also some, uh, local funding, is, is a huge deal to make this work, this really is taking a lot of effort. I'll get into my normal piece on the TIF in a second, but not only is TIF crucial to all affordable housing, but particularly, as Fred said, uh, they've used some of these additional finding, the funding to buy down the rents, to make it even more affordable. So they've taken probably what we, we came with, you know, when we were talking about P U D and stuff, and, and brought, and made it even more affordable, so like even furthering this cause. Um, but again, with, with, with TIF and affordable housing, you know, it's a thirty-nine million dollar project. That building's gonna cost thirty-nine million dollars to build regardless of what those rents are charged. Now you're taking it and you're saying, okay, now we're gonna, we're going to reduce what we would otherwise charge, uh, you know, valuation based on state statute, we thought it was gonna be valued at a little over eleven million dollars, you can see the difference there, uh, just in valuation, but you, with, in a normal project, you charge the rent that's necessary in order to cover your debt service, to make your profit you need, and that's, you can't do that because we're saying we're only going to, you know, maximum rent rent, 60% AMI, and lower on some of these units. Again, you can't charge the rent. You can't charge higher rent. You can't increase your rents. And that's why all these pieces are crucial. That $2.4 million in TIF really is a big piece of it, as well as everything else. We've got site acquisition costs, you know, site preparation, all the demo of that building, asbestos abatement, all those pieces, just to get the site ready, building it up. And then just to mention the other two, couple pieces, there's going to be that public, public front porch concept. We've got a public plaza, linear park. These are going to be public aspects to not only help out with the building itself, but also the neighborhood. So you've got a, you've got a community service facility added. You've got a public plaza. It's just a really exciting project overall. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Seeing no questions? Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here? Oh, please. Yes, welcome.
Good, thank you. Good afternoon, council members. I am Nancy Johner, and my address is 1701 South 17th Street here in Lincoln. I'm the executive director of Clinic with a Heart. And so I want to, I guess I want to talk a little bit about clinic. I don't know if everybody on the council knows about Clinic with a Heart. Nod your head. Otherwise, I will give you all this stuff. Okay, I'll give it to you.
People at home want to hear about it.
Because it is, it is a great place, and we are so excited. Okay, so Clinic with a Heart offers free healthcare services to those who are uninsured and underinsured. And we also take Medicaid patients as well, because as we all know, that there's not a lot of Medicaid providers in our community. But I also want to raise awareness about our vital role at Clinic with a Heart that plays in Lincoln and the excitement that we have about this relocation. And we also want to share that we are very grateful to be part of this Hoppy Development, because they have been great to work with. And I think this combination with housing and healthcare is a vital role for Lincoln. So one of the most important things that we do at clinic, in the clinic with a Heart, is to serve our patients. And they come from a diverse background. So the majority of our patients are the working poor. And they make, in 2023, 63% of our patients earn less, income less of $16,000 annually. And with the rising healthcare costs, more adults turn to our clinic for help. So most of our patients use our medical services, but dental is a huge demand. We have, we only serve about 14 patients a week, and we have to turn away patients every day. So with this new location, we should be able to serve a few more patients. 30% of our visits are dental. But by offering these essential services, we alleviate pressures from the ER. And that's the goal, is that we want them to come to Clinic with a Heart, rather than to use the resources in the emergency room, and then they leave there with this huge bill that they're not able to pay for. But since opening the doors in 2023, so we're 21 years old, we have served, we are serving 3,000 patients per year, and we have 300 volunteers that help us do that. So that's why our generous, I guess, by our generous donors, we're able to provide free medical and dental services to our patient. So I want to make sure that we continue to raise awareness for, for the community, so that people, more people are aware that Clinic with a Heart is there. But I think this location is going to be critical, because it is in a part of town where we will be able to serve the patients that need access to medical care. And I'm very excited, because having 125 units right above our clinic, we should be able to do something that targets or specifically helps that, you know, that building, right? And so we should be able to show that they can, we can provide a healthier community by having access to medical care. So with that, I just want to thank you for your support on initiatives like this. And together, we are building a healthier, stronger Lincoln, and we're excited for our next chapter. And so we look forward to serving more people in the future. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. And before I leave, I want to extend an invite, and I know I've done this for Benny and Sandra, to everyone to come and tour the clinic. Because you, I mean, it is a great place now, but with our new building, it's going to be even better. So you're welcome. Just call me. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? Whoops, pardon me. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Members of the council, my name is Kyle Johnson, 1227 Lincoln Mall, and I'm the president of the South of Downtown Community Development Organization. And we're delighted with this. This is going to be fun. This is a catalyst project done by professionals. We're delighted that Hoppy's involved. We looked at this property five years ago, six years ago, and it was identified then as a key property in this area. The South of Downtown really is two census tracts that are some of the lowest income in the city, from 10th to 17th, from A Street up to about K. Low income, 93% rental. So this is going to have a huge impact. And with great deference to Hoppy's doing work out by the casino, this is working downtown. This is right in the central area. So, thank you. We are, we are very pleased with it. We totally support it. We request your support. This is going to be transformational, having Clinic with a Heart right in the middle of it as well. We are delighted with that. We were lucky, not lucky, we plotted it to buy it from Center Point and put together the financing. And we had the advantage of the support of the Lincoln Community Foundation, Security First Bank, and then the Hoppy's stepped up as well. So we were able to buy it and then negotiate the proposal with the Hoppy's to do what is going to be a wonderful project. So thank you very much. We appreciate your support. The city of Lincoln has been transformational again in this, in terms of zoning, support, financing. So my hat's off to you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. Charles West, Neighborhoods Lincoln, CEO, 2530 Q Street. I'm also here today in my capacity as the South of Downtown Community Development Organization manager. I did hit ninth. I'm a baseball guy, so this is kind of familiar territory for me. I had some notes. I think everyone else has pretty much hit it, so I'm just going to go through what I had and just reiterate. Throughout this project, there has been concerted and meaningful engagement that informed the project, so check. Thoughtful design, check. A meaningful tenant for the neighborhood, Clinic with a Heart, check. Public art, check. Deep affordable housing that the city desperately needs, check. And throughout all of this, has been a spirit of partnership that has moved this project further than it ever could on its own. So check, check, check. Excited to see this thing come to fruition, and I feel like we have been talking about it for a really long time, and it's exciting to be here. So I am fully in support.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions for any of the folks who've come forward this afternoon? All right. Is there anyone else here in chambers who would like to speak on this item? Anyone else here in chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
We can now move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and Larry Wolf for the lease of space by AG Partners for its personal and family services at 137 North 8th Street, Geneva, Nebraska, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Beckis.
So moved.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, Beckis. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7B, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and the city of Polk, Nebraska, for the lease of space by AG Partners for its personnel and family services program at 400 Hawkeye Street, Osceola, Nebraska, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and city of Hickman for lease of space by AG Partners for its senior program at 115 Locust Street, Hickman, Nebraska, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and Americans Legion Post 280 for the lease of space by AG Partners for its senior center program at 971 Monroe Bennett, Nebraska, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and Village of Firth, Firth Community Center, for lease of space by AG Partners for its senior center program located at 311 Emele House Street, Firth, Nebraska, September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7F, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and Rex Jane Reamer for lease of space by AG Partners for its personnel and family services located at 370 North 5th Street, David City, Nebraska, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Beckis?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7G, is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and Village of Malcolm for lease of space by AG Partners for its senior center program at 137 East 2nd Street, Malcolm, Nebraska, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st of 2026. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Resolutions, first readings are Section 8, Items 8A through 8E. And our pending list are Items 9A through 9H.